Call the meeting in order, all rise for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public to be heard?
None.
Uh, we're gonna have our...
That's inherent.
Yep, okay. Uh, I'm up with the good news. That's here. Uh, from the high school, Tom Inglesby. Gretchen Weischer has been selected to the chair, to chair the press corps committee at the Hilton Model UN Conference in October. Gretchen has won awards for her excellence in the press corps at the past two conferences that she, that she has attended, and is now taking on the leadership role to help support other aspiring journalists. Fancy, good job Gretchen. From Jackson, from Ms. Nataro. Our Jackson primary teachers, all of them, did an amazing job with our students and embracing the PLC process. Our day was off the charts, and I'm very proud of all our students' success. I would like to thank the Jackson teachers for collaborative effort to endure, all students had a great academic year. And there's plenty of more good news to read, so please, uh, take a look at that for me. Um, next up, Mr. Joel Reed, Mr. Brennan Braves. Update on our athletics department.
Good evening, everyone. So, we're gonna just, we thought, put a presentation together. It's really a review of the year, and maybe some upcoming things that just wanna make sure everybody knows about, some bragging points. Brennan and I are gonna do this presentation together, Brennan being the athletic program assistant. We work hand in hand every day, usually something to do with either scheduling or with working with physical education things. As Brennan is also the department chair of physical education. And then, in addition to that, he helps out with the middle school stuff, whether it be APP. So that's our testing for our kids that are hoping to move up levels. And Brennan also helps out with supervisory, he's at different events, you probably seen him at some of those as well. So, he's a big help. He helped me with some of the accomplishments here, the screens for the accomplishments this year. And he's actually gonna lead us off a little bit, kinda talk about some of the really unique and good things that we've done this year. And then, I'm gonna follow it up and finish up with some of the things that have either happened, that I wanna make sure that we talk about, or that are on the horizon. So, Bren's gonna start us off a little bit. I've been told these two arrows.
Hey, give me the easy job here. Alright, so first thing we're gonna do is just highlight some team highlights from throughout the year. And basically, we decided to kinda just talk about the teams that made it to a sectional championship. But you guys know, it's very difficult to obviously win a sectional championship, but to, to make it to the finals is also a, a difficult task. So, in the fall, we had the football team, sectional finals appearance. They ended up losing to Eastridge 28 to 14, and that was at SUNY Brockport. In the winter, we had our boys ice hockey team, and that was, why I say boys ice hockey team, actually it's not the boys ice hockey team, it's the hockey team, 'cause we have Nicole on, on that team as well. Sectional finals appearance, lost to Victor 6 to 3, and that was at RIT. In the winter, we had girls indoor track and field sectional championship, and they were sectional champs. Nineteenth girls indoor track and field sectional championship. And the championship team included nine individual sectional champions. And we'll talk about the individual sectional champs when we get to the individual accolades. Our boys indoor track and field team, they were also sectional champions. It's the 12th boys indoor track and field sectional championship. And this championship team included seven individual sectional champions. Also, in the winter, we had boys basketball. They were the Monroe County Division One Conference champs. They lost to East in the semifinals at Finger Lakes Community College. As you can see, actually, they photoshopped Coach Brasky in that picture, uh, 'cause, um, obviously he had some health issues going on this year. And then, in the spring, we had our flag football team, lost a heartbreaker in the sectional finals, 7 to 0 to CG Finney, and that was at MCC, Monroe Community College. And, uh, most recently here, girls outdoor track and field, they were sectional champions. And this is the fourth girls outdoor track and field sectional championship in a row, which is amazing. Eighth girls outdoor track and field sectional championship. And the championship team included nine individual sectional champions. And then, also to follow that up, our boys outdoor track and field, uh, they were also sectional champs. And this is the ninth boys outdoor track and field sectional championship. And this championship team included 12 individual sectional champions. And then, to go on to the individual highlights, I won't read off all the names, but you can take a look at them up there. We had our nine individual sectional champions, and this was in the indoor track winter season. So you can take a look, uh, pretty impressive crew up there. And then, also in the wintertime, our individual sectional champions for the boys. We had seven individuals that earned individual sectional championships. And then, going to outdoor track and field, we had nine of our female student athletes that were individual sectional champions. You can take a look up there, a lot of the same names. Uh, we have a few new names in there as well. And then, boys outdoor track and field, we had 12 individual sectional champions. And then, in our wintertime, our New York State representatives, again, from, we have boys ice hockey. Our ice hockey, we have girls indoor track and field, and then, boys indoor, uh, track and field. Taking a look there, those were our New York State representatives in the wintertime. And, as we know, we had a New York State champion, Sheldon Sibberling. And this was his second consecutive shot put state championship, and he threw a 61.5 inches. Then, the spring, most recently, this past weekend, these were our New York State, State representatives for girls outdoor track and field and boys outdoor track and field. And coming home with state, uh, state titles, our four by one relay. They won the state championship in class B. And then, Cooper Kinesny also won the pole vault, and that was also a new school record that he set in the pole vault as a state champion.
Alright.
Thank you.
Some important things that I think that took place this year that are good for all of us to know, and that I hope to do more of in the future, or hope that Batavia can do more of in the future. In January, on January 15th, we held, we hosted the section five dual championships for wrestling in the class of B. We, we were also involved in that as well. Ms. Marucci helped on that day. It was a very good day, I think. We, uh, the section was very grateful for us picking that up. It showcases our school, showcases our athletes, and it showcases that we can host a meet or an event like that. The section was very grateful for that. Then, just a couple of weeks ago, we also hosted the class B outdoor track and field state qualifier. We had 19 schools at that event. It went very smoothly. The section, again, was very grateful for that. We had plenty of success on that day as well, as we had many more state qualifiers, state qualifiers come up in that meet. That was prior to, obviously, states this last weekend. We didn't have great weather for that again, but that was kinda the theme for the spring, so. Then, this year, we changed things up a little bit, and we combined a couple of events. And I've been told that it went over pretty well. We had the, we had an athletic award and signing night. And what that entailed was, we did our normal athletic awards and scholarships. We gave away and recognized 20 different scholarships and awards on that evening. But we also had 10 different individuals that were interested in doing a ceremonial college signing. Where they come up, we take a picture of them signing a document that basically gives their intent to go and play a sport at the school they're, that they're going to in the fall. And we announce what sport, we announce what school, and it's just a nice piece. We invite the media, and Emily, Ms. Benedict, she did a wonderful job of showcasing that and getting it out for all of the community. Pardon me. This year for scholar athletes, we did pretty good. Excuse me. We had 268 student athletes that qualified as individual scholar athletes. And as it says up there, that means that those individuals had a 90, um, grade point average during that time. And then, they are recognized by the section. In the fall, we were fortunate enough to have a individual recognized by the section as the winner for girls volleyball. That was Ms. Anderson, Ava. She received that for, and represented Batavia for that, that award. Only one individual per program wins that scholar athlete award, so that's really a good accomplishment. And then, as far as teams, in order to be a team that's recognized, it has to have 75% of the athletes on the varsity roster that meet the 90, um, 90 grade point average. We had seven in the spring this year. We had nine in the winter, and we had six in the fall. 22 of the 28 teams, and because of that, it gave us the 80%. We needed to have 75% of our team in order to qualify as a school of excellence. And that's what we qualified for again this year. I was told that we did that last year as well, so that's good. We're keeping our percentages up and doing well. And then, something, some of the things that are coming on the horizon that I just wanted to bring forward. So, New York State is, again, changing their requirements for coaches. If you, this year, we really worked on making sure that our coaches were making all of the credentials that they needed that New York State requires. New York State is, again, changing the CPR first aid requirement now. That vote comes up here in the summertime. What that will entail is, the state recognizes that some of the CPR first aid courses, and there's lots that can be taken, they've gotten to be a little bit cumbersome for the coaches. And they're not always readily available, so they're changing that. There's a vote for it in the summertime to, each district can make a determination on the level of CPR first aid that it requires the coaches to have. There's still gonna be CPR first aid for coaches, but you can also supplement that with CPR first aid professional rescuers, CPR first aid AED, um, just regular that anybody can take. All of those are changes that the state's coming down from the state, as well as the state's making it easier for coaches to get their coaching certification classes. They offer several online options now in addition to in-person, so it's, they're good changes. They're good changes that New York State's probably a little bit behind on making, so I'm kinda happy and looking forward to that. The academic eligibility, we're looking forward to year two. Some of the reflections on that is how we collected the data and communicate to the coaches. I felt like, over the course of the year, there's definite improvements there. And we were able to utilize some of our internal software that helped us collect that data a little bit better. And we're looking forward to the fall, be able to have a smoother transition, be able to make that a little bit more easily communicated to the coaches. Utilizing some of our internal staff, counseling departments, so on and so forth. It helps us be able to know what the kids' grades are and communicate that onto the coaches a little bit easier, so. It did go well, though, in its first year. And then, the first slide, you saw it, 500. This year, we actually had Coach Buddy Brasky. He hit his 500th win. He got it back on January 24th. I remember the date. He, on that day, he got his 500th win. We faced Eastridge. Score was 83 to 79. It was a close one. Some of the things from Coach Brasky's career that I thought were worth mentioning tonight. He's been at it for 35 years. Out of those 35 years, he's had 26 seasons where he's been over 500. He had 22 years in a row where he was better than 500, in 97 to 18. He's had six sectional championship teams, four regional championship teams, which means he's represented the state four different times. And his best year was in 2008, 2009. He went 22 and 4. And that was the year that he also went to states. So, he had some really good runs, and it was really nice to be able to recognize him for that. I can tell you, uh, in my stops prior to here, I did not have any coaches that reached 500 events, which is pretty incredible when you think about it, so. Some things to celebrate, and some good things on the horizon. Do you guys have any questions? Anything that came up that, of interest?
Joe, how's the, uh, the multi-sport going for the students?
You mean dual sporting?
Dual sports.
So, kids that are playing two sports in a season? It's been good. I know that, uh, I, this was prior to me, there was something put in place where only two of the seasons, students can dual sport. And we've had probably anywhere, depending on the season, anywhere between 10 and as low as three students that are, um, dual sporting in that, in that sport season, either the fall, the spring, or the winter. It's something that I see more in the spring, really, because, uh, probably the one that utilizes it the most is like, flag football. There's several girls on that roster that either played softball or ran track, and then, they're also playing flag football. But, um, it's good. I, I think that it's probably a smart thing to limit it to two seasons. 'Cause when you think about all that these kids have to do as far as academic eligibility and just keeping themselves healthy, you know, I should keep in mind that this is also an important time for body maturation, just being healthy. You know, you don't wanna tax too much, so I think that that's going well. I don't know if there's a particular part that you're interested in.
Nope, I was asking how it's going.
Yeah, yeah, I think that that's doing well. The coaches seem to work pretty well with each other, too. I really haven't had any coaches that have come forward and say, "No, I'm not in favor. We can't make that work." So, yeah, it's been pretty good. Anything else? How are the numbers looking for sports? Numbers for sports? So, um, I think I heard a conversation a little bit earlier. We have, what I've noticed, the trend, is that we have between the grades of, it's really ninth through 11th, but 10th grade, this, this cohort, not next year's 10th grade, this year's 10th grade. I see like a lull in kids that are playing sports. And it's not specific to one season. It's not specific to one sport. It's really just that group of kids, uh, for whatever reason. It's either lack of interest, or just not, uh, maybe didn't get involved in it. I hate using the C-word, COVID, but I think that we're still seeing some of that, as that's a very influential time. When you look at that, that's when they were young enough to be able to starting earlier on in sports. So I think that really put a good-sized dent in it. As far as, if I look outside of Batavia community, I see at that same age group similar numbers. So, I think the impact, it, it's not unique to just Batavia. It's, you know, it's global.
Everybody's seen it.
Yeah, everybody's seen it. I have been told, and I do try to keep tabs on the youth sports, whether it's baseball, softball, lacrosse, even, you know, basketball, football. And I've been told that in the next couple of years, the next couple cohorts, like your fifth, sixth, seventh right now, there's numbers bumping up there. So, that's, that's good. That's encouraging. It's really getting those kids involved in the programs and having them be interested to follow through, you know, so making it fun. But also making it a value, right? We, we work on that in our PE classes. It's been a large part of our discussion. How do we do this? How do we keep our kids interested in staying fit and valuing a healthy lifestyle for the rest of life? And a big part of that is participation in sports. Really, I've always been an advocate of participation in sports teaches kids a lot more about, about being a leader and being a good teammate than, you know, that specific sport made those, those lessons in that sport, so. I hope that answers your question.
It did. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody?
Thanks, Joe.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I don't know how to turn it off.
I do, but not, not on purpose.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, Superintendent Jason Smith's report.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the Batavia families and parents and community for the budget support this past May. Over when we, only when we approve, so we look forward to another year. Welcome to Dan Schmidt, who was elected to the board effective July 1st. And welcome back to Chez Rolfe, I think his second term. Chez?
Yes.
Second term, third, third. Excuse me, third, Joe. Welcome back for your third year. I wanna also recognize, you know, John Rucci again for his leadership and dedication. I recognized him before with the class, and John, thank you, and good luck in your future plans, surveying, whatever else comes your way. But, uh, thank you for the last six years.
Thank you.
Again, recognition to our B T I R's. Most of them are here tonight. We have a few teachers who are not here, and I wanna recognize them as well. Congrats to our track and field medalists. This past weekend, you heard Joel and Brennan talk about them. Of course, we have no school Thursday, just as a helpful reminder due to Juneteenth. And half days begin next week for our students who raised pre-school through eight, so our information's coming out on that. Graduation's next Friday. Cam, and any fellow classmates, congrats upon 2025. Look forward to being there with the next Friday at the stadium as our, as the board members are. And the last, I just wanna make sure the board is aware, we can talk about it later in the, that part of the meeting, but the internet-enabled device ban is up for a first read tonight. Tom Leno has a, has a cellphone ban, but it encompasses all internet-enabled devices. A lot of update the boys to where we are with that. I did mention it last week or so, the visual update for our parents. We surveyed the staff in the middle school and high school, for their feedback on it. Both Dr. Klein and Ms. West have spoken to student reps, which we're asked to do. I met this afternoon with members of our employee associations and got their feedback. A parent feedback form is being written as we speak. I'll have it out after graduation to get some parent feedback on it. And by law, the board must adopt something by August 1st. My plan right now is to have this policy to, again, in a finalized version in July, at the mid-July board meeting, adopt it, and then go from there. But again, that's later on in the agenda. We'll, if you have more questions, then we can talk about that. I do wanna make sure that our families who are listening out there know that it is in the works and surveys coming out toward the end of June for our families regarding any questions they may have on the policy. Any questions?
Anyone?
We can talk about them all later when the time comes. And, and I also wanna recognize Cam, uh, before he gives his final report on his leadership. You have big shoes to fill, but Cam, good luck at RIT, right?
Yes.
Next year, so best wishes to you, Cam, and thank you for being a valuable member of our team. That's all I have.
Alright, next up, Cam. Joe, last one.
Athletics were mostly covered, but.
Sorry about that. We tried.
No, you're good. I don't like reporting on them. But the only thing wasn't mentioned was, we had the, uh, the Vandoyle Stadium hosted the Special Olympics. Fisher Smith was there. Health Academy volunteered there. Other than like, all of the tents immediately getting blown over, it went actually really well. I think we're gonna continue doing it, maybe. I don't know. I might be here. Anyway. Um, I'd like to begin by thanking each and every one of you for welcoming, welcoming me to this body, and I hope that I've done a satisfactory job this year. It's been an honor to see how the Board of Education operates, and it's time to represent the student body. Looking back at my first report, I recall being excited about the medical field and the beginning of Health Academy, which we graduated from last week. I intended to attend Bangor University for Integrative Neuroscience. Although I did end up getting accepted into that program, I decided to attend RIT for Medical Illustration, which is like a really good combination of my interest in the medical world and fine arts. I attempted to graduate with a Bachelor's of Fine Arts in Medical Illustration, eventually freelance, and then become an art educator. I'm grateful for the insight that Bosse's and the teachers that I'm close with have provided me with. Although high schools come to the close for class of 2025, the senior year is still far from over. Tomorrow, I will present, I will be present for the Teacher Appreciation Night, as well as many of my peers, and the seniorship to DC leaves on Thursday. These are stable high school experiences that myself and many others are looking forward to. To be honest, I don't really have much more to say. This year's been one of the momentous growth for me, and I couldn't have done it without all the staff and students in this building, so just thank you guys, and good luck next year. Thanks, Cam.
Thanks, Cam. Cam, it's been a pleasure.
Been a year.
Alright, um, next up. Grouping of consent items. Gonna need a motion to approve the grouping of the consent items. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Ms. Len Bay, could I have a second?
Can I second it? No.
That's right. Nice try.
Could I have a second? Mr. Rolfe.
Can I have an honor or a second, Cam?
Can you like hit the gavel?
Alright, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Alright. Next up, we're at N, new contracts. ESP Media Communications and Marketing Proposal for July 1, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. Any questions? None? Okay. I'm going to need a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Rio, could I have a second? Ms. Bowman? All in favor? Aye.
I'm abstaining.
Yeah, I was saying, abstaining, abstaining, yes. Any opposed? Next up, new business. One, cooperative agreement between the Batavia City School District and Global YMCA Incorporated for the implementation of STEM initiatives. Any questions? Alright, could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Ms. Len Bay, could I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bowman? All in favor? Aye. Alright, set. Number two, policy updates from Erie One Bosse's policy out of first read.
So, these were one I already talked about, but I'll come back on a second. The first one is the, uh, temperature law, which, again, we're, the district is required to have in place. That goes into effect September 1st. The details are contained in the policy itself. Essentially, uh, we have to provide mitigated efforts, like it's keeping the windows open. The effort is finance for our staff, and telling them to attest if he has a fan in his classroom. The temperatures are rising above 82 degrees. We did do a test run last year on a really hot day in June, and we had, the magic number really is 88 degrees. If it gets above 88 degrees, we have to relocate those students. And last year, in all of our five buildings, we had one classroom, second floor, Ron Morris, reached 92 degrees. So, I'm not saying, not saying what happened, but, um, that's the, uh, that's the number that we have to have. And we've engaged a building in ground staff. Uh, I'm working with the DPD to have the windows be open as that's a mitigated effort. We had purchased little sticks for safety, now you have to keep the windows ajar. We purchased fans. This is, that's September 1st. Is that it? Any questions on that? Second one is the internet-enabled device ban, which is commonly called the cellphone ban. I've already hit those main points on that. Any questions, comments, or suggestions on that? We've got some dialogue on it, it's up for the, I don't know, but.
People understand that this isn't a power thing. It's a state thing, right?
Do they understand that? I think most people do, but I can't promise you that it's 100% the fact I'm talking about now. But we're gonna, we're gonna ramp up the whole effort. Once it's passed, we wanna do some video updates. Share our families, look like what the possible cellphone lockers look like. Well, obviously, we have some break periods to get kids used to it. We have to update the code of conduct. But in the, um, survey that I had coming out, I explained I have a link to the bill, or to the law, rather. I met with the union associations, our presidents this afternoon. They're on board with it. And we've got some good feedback from our faculty as well, faculty and staff. And students. Honestly, the students I've talked to, and they have been talked to, Cam, you've seen it, you doesn't have to worry about this anymore. They recognize that just having the phones in their, in their own lockers is gonna be too tempting. And we have mine right here. It's obviously addictive, so we're looking at some storage containers. But again, we'll teach the kids the procedures, teach the students those expectations, and monitor and adjust, and hold them accountable to it. So I think, um, I feel better about, I feel much more confident than I did about what I'm gonna do. And I've talked to more teachers and principals and parents, so.
I feel like the parents are gonna also need education, like how they can get ahold of their child during the day? Whether it's through email, I don't know, Parents Square will be.
Well, also in the policy, we have to have that.
Okay.
And when we do that, if nothing else, parents can always call the school, like they did with their own school.
Right.
We're looking at some other methods as well. We haven't, um, finalized those yet. But, and there's also exceptions made as well for students that have learning disabilities, that need a translation service and medical needs, you know, like, um, diabetes tracking. Those exceptions are spelled out in the policy. But yeah, so in the policy, it does say how, we have to say how parents can contact kids.
Yeah. I just worry about like this, this, um, front office staff being bombarded, you know, in SUNY needs, or whatever.
I think a lot of those, and I can speak firsthand, a lot of the requests are not priority.
Right, right. I agree.
Yeah, and I can speak that, you know, personally, from a personal, from a personal perspective, too, and not much priority.
Yeah. I think it's just gonna take communication in the morning.
Yeah.
Or then it's often.
So we're gonna, once it's through, we're gonna wrap up the whole, the whole plan, so thank you for that. Maybe we need to listen to a story on this, Brian, for this? What do you think?
Alright, any other questions? Any other questions?
Thank you for those questions, and I'll keep you, I'll keep you updated on that.
Alright, could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mr. Rio, could I have a second?
Second.
Who said that?
Correct.
Ms. Anderson. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Alright, number three, resolution amending and confirming seeker negative declaration for Capitol. All right, number three, resolution amending and confirming seeker negative declaration for capital improvements project titled BCSD Reimagine, Shaping Our Schools For The Future, any questions? No? Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Ms. Benedict, could I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bowman. All in favor? Aye. All right, number four, resolution to create position Assistant Director of Special Education. Any questions? No? All right, could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Ms. Linde, could I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Rolfe. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Number five, approved job description for Assistant Director of Special Ed. Any questions? Alleviant?
I would assume that they, the job description would include responsibilities was discussed with.
Yeah, right, yes, it was.
It was.
Extensively, yes.
So this is a full and complete list?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions? No? All right, could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Ms. Benedict, could I have a second? Mr. Rolfe. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next up, discussions and other reports. Board goal updates, anybody got any updates on?
I don't have an update on that, but I will say I've had some conversations to look at a possible retreat for next, for next summer. I'm looking at, talking with the school committee about that, and looking at perhaps any NISBA committee, different, different facilitator that you're, that's your association, and they do some great retreats. So I think the goal, the goal piece, you know, with the new board, board member coming on, changes the board leadership. My recommendation would be to, I've been happy with our other folks, but it's good to change things up, I think. And what I like about NISBA is they are, so they are, it's a New York City School, it's a New York City School Association, and they're your one advocacy group, and I think they do a nice job with, with retreats, so that's just my comment.
All right, so any board members have any comments or news to share?
Batavia Middle School is going well. I've done it twice and spent the whole morning attending different classes. I've been impressed by the teachers, I've been impressed by the students, and I've been impressed by Dr. Klein, so that is a win-win.
All I have to say is, I did my last tours of our schools a couple, two weeks ago today. Started off at Robert Morris, I think Ms. Corzilius is doing a fantastic job there. She's on top of everything, and that includes the capital project improvements that are gonna be happening at Robert Morris. She is on top of everything down there. I then went over to Jackson, got a nice tour from Ms. Notaro. And believe it or not, the young lady that gave me my hug last year when I walked into her room remembered me and came and gave me another hug this year. So that kinda made my whole day right there. Then went on to JK and had a nice tour with Mr. Kessler. Things looked to be going good over at JK. Went to BMS, and that was probably my longest tour. Dr. Klein wanted to make sure that I got into classes, saw some teachers educating the students. And from what I saw, fantastic. I saw students very engaged. The teachers were doing a fantastic job. We went down to the tech room, and it was great to see, and I called it workshop, obviously, back in my day, but to see young ladies in there building chairs and doing stuff like that, I thought that was fantastic to see. Then obviously, my, my final stop was here at the high school. Ms. West did a, did a great job giving me a tour, walking me around, and things are going very well here at the high school, from what I can see, so. I think all our schools are in very good hands. That's really all I got to say, except thank you guys for six great years.
I just want to mention one thing, I appreciate all of the information for all the events in all of the schools and putting them, getting them out of my calendar. Because, you know, for many years, I haphazardly knew about things because I had friends or relatives that were involved, but I really appreciate.
Even if you did come, it's nice to know that, it's nice to know that you know they're happy.
Yes, yes, yeah.
So, yeah, we'll keep doing that, that was a, hey, it's Jackson, I can't believe one of you may have been you came up over our lead last summer, so we'll keep doing that. Speaking of that, I want to thank Andy for doing double duty here as an assistant district clerk. We did appoint tonight Carla Cole, who'll start on July first, we're excited to have Carl and John, and hopefully I'll be able to recommend Andy. One more meeting to go, and, and he's burning midnight oil, so thank you for that, so. And Carla's starting on July first, for her first degree.
I wanted to give a shout out to Maggie Warren, who put together the talent show at the middle school, which I hadn't seen before. And they conned my son into doing it, but he actually, no, he, he really, he enjoyed it, and they, she, they did a really good job, they had all sorts of them. And then, actually, Saturday evening, we had kids from both John Kennedy and the middle school, as well as Byvergin and St. Joe's, who played in the youth All-Star game, which was a blast, with some good little athletes coming up. And then, John, Ches, and I got to go have some fun at Vando Stadium with the Robert Morris kids, which was a riot in their bubble fest.
Yes. Unwinnable riot.
Things are funny.
They're mad.
Well, just on, on the Special Olympics, don't let that go away.
No.
Because that, that's, that's something special.
I ask everybody at the stadium, once they have it again next year, they all say, yes, I turned to the, I turned to Ms. Marciano and Jackie from school blind, because we have that, so we'll hopefully expand it, so enjoy, it was nice for everybody, it was great.
Thanks for mentioning that, John, I had someone, a friend of mine, her daughter, or sorry, her son is at the blind school, and she sent me a private message, and she said to tell everyone that volunteered how much it meant for her kids and all those kids to be celebrated and clap for, and she goes, the amount of volunteers and support, she goes, you don't know unless you have a special needs child what that meant.
That's all.
So, don't, don't let that amount stop.
It was fun to see the pictures, like the, the end of someone were shooting, they were all, they were all like lined up, and I think clapping, yeah.
Yeah, we're glad to do it, and honestly, when the school for blind had approached me in the last office, I just assumed they had something, and we didn't. So, we partnered with them, and Bosse's came, and I think a couple other schools of interest as well, so I'm happy to keep hosting.
That's awesome.
All right, anything else? No? All right, call for executive session, and we will not return to public session. Call for executive session is a, gonna need a motion to move to executive session to discuss matters related to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Ms. Linde, could I have a second? Mr. Rolfe. All in favor? Aye. None opposed?